Welcome to our city council meeting tonight. Appreciate you all coming. We'd like to welcome our new city council members to the hot seat. Does that sound good? We're going to start by an invocation by Councilman Kurt Ivey, and I've asked Councilman Craig Coats if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. Move on to item one, approval of the agenda. We do need to eliminate the council meeting minutes of 12:10, 19. So would you please recognize that in whoever is going to approve this agenda?
Mayor, I'll motion that we approve the agenda as outlined, and we will remove the minutes from 12:10, 19 under the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Coats' eye.
Ward's eye.
Ivey, eye.
Clough, eye.
Staley, eye.
Thank you. Announcements, item two. I have one announcement that I'd like to share. It's from the Pro-Life Coalition. Is that, did I say, state that right?
Pro-Life Utah.
Pro-Life Utah, okay. I'd like to read this Pro-Life proclamation. Whereas at the Declaration of Independence, the founding document of the United States of America states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas human life begins at conception, continues uninterrupted until the moment of natural death, and whereas each and every human life is unique, precious, and worthy of fundamental protections, and whereas it is within the purview of the Washington City Government to protect, help, safety, and well-being of all human life within the county, and whereas the protection of all human life is important to the people of Washington City. Now therefore I, Kenneth Nielsen, Mayor of Washington City, Utah, do hereby proclaim that January 2020 be Pro-Life Month in Washington City, and we invite all residents to learn how they can help by, one, declare that all human life, including the unborn, must always be valued and protected by the laws of society, and in particular, that society should protect those who cannot protect themselves. Two, support legislation on the state and national levels that protects human life from its earliest stages, and we oppose lessening existing restrictions on abortion and euthanasia. Three, honor the right of health care providers to object on moral grounds to performing abortions or euthanasia, and we oppose any regulation or law seeking to violate that right. Four, seek to recognize and provide support for those who face difficult pregnancies, and we encourage them to choose life. Five, support efforts to educate and support parents in choosing life-affirming options such as adoption for their unborn children, and thus encourage the state and federal governments to support and simplify the adoption process. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Washington City, the eighth day of January 2020." Thank you. I know a Councilman, Coats, would like to take a few minutes, correct?
I know I was.
You wanted to talk about your...
Oh, I thought we were going to do that later. But I can do it now.
Would you do it now?
Yes, I would love to do it.
Okay, thank you. No, no, thank you.
The subject's on me, so. I just wanted to basically get on the record of my conflict of interest that potentially I can have with my current work and with Alliance Consulting. My employer sometimes has projects that come through the city, and I will recuse myself at those times. I just want to make the council aware of that.
Mayor, if I could, we will have, probably when you receive your training on the open and public meeting requirements, which is requirement each year, our city recorder will handle that. We'll actually have also conflict of interest forms for all elected officials to fill out at that time and have on record, which is also...
Thank you.
I'll portray for you then.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Coats, appreciate that. Sorry to put that ahead of you.
No, it's all right. I just, I thought you meant I had a statement on what you just said. I wasn't prepared.
If you did, you're welcome to state it. Okay, item five, planning commission appointment. Consideration to confirm the appointment of a member to the planning commission. Excuse me? Did I miss one? Oh, my. I was so excited about it. Item four, consent agenda, approval, to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of 12:11, 19, and the board audit report. Consideration to afford that, to approve that board audit for the December 19, 2019. Any questions or comments before we make it?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
I'll second that.
Can I have a motion and a second?
Staley, eye.
Clough, eye.
Ivey, eye.
Ward, eye.
Coats, eye.
Thank you, that is approved. Item five, planning commission appointment. Item A, consideration to confirm the appointment of a plan, of a member to the planning commission. I would like to recommend the name of Jason Smith to be on the planning commission. Jason was previously on it, and I just feel like we could use some experience back on the, on the planning commission. So I would like to ask the council to support me in confirming that appointment this time.
Mayor, I had the opportunity to serve on the planning commission with Jason Smith, and I really can't think of a better candidate for you to bring forth and recommend to fill that seat. He's got a strong background in engineering. He understands land use. He's a good citizen of Washington City. I think he'll be a strong asset in that role.
I want to, I want to second that as well. So I've known Jason for quite a few years, and I replaced him when I first got on planning commission, and I'm happy to see that he's come back to help lead the, or be on planning commission.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the planning commission appointment to, do I need to state his name, Jason?
Please. Do I have a second?
Second?
Motion and a second?
Yes.
Coats', eye.
Sorry.
Ward, eye.
You're doing good.
Ivey, eye.
Clough, eye.
Staley, eye.
All right, thank you. Consideration to confirm an appointment to the 2020 planning commission chair. I would also like to extend that invitation to Jason Smith to serve as our planning commission chairman.
Mayor, I'll motion that we appoint Jason Smith as planning commission chair.
I would be happy to second that.
Can I have a motion and a second? We'll start with Councilman Clough.
Clough, eye.
Ivey, eye.
Ward, eye.
Coats', eye. Staley, eye.
Thank you. Item six, public hearings and related ordinances. Item A, public hearing for consideration to approve zone change request, Z-19-17, a request from residential, single-family, 12,000-square-foot lots, R112 to residential, single-family, 10,000-square-foot lots, R110, located approximately 500 West, 2,800 South, applicant James Sullivan.
So Mayor, if I could take that.
Yes.
You've got the third string tonight. Mr. Ellerman is out of town. His, his wife is receiving her American citizenship. She's Canadian. And Kathy, who you would have had tonight, has had some family issues that were required for her. So I'm going to go over the staff reports with respect to that in preparation for your public hearing. I also have asked Councilman Coats, because he just recently came from, if there's a lot of technical questions on the commission, he just came from the planning commission, he'd be able to help us out on that. So as the mayor mentioned, this is a, a zone approval to change the zoning, approximately 19.6 acres, located 500 West, 2,800 South. Being requested to change from the current zoning of single-family residential 12,000 square feet, a minimum, to the proposed single-family residential 10,000 square foot minimum. The R110 requests for the purpose of developing the parcel and the future residential developments. The general plan, land use designation for this location is low-density residential, and the low-density residential carries a density of 3 to 4.5 dwelling units per acre density ratio, and allows for the zoning districts of R112 and R110. The surrounding zoning to the parcel is Washington County zoning to the west, R110 to the south, and RA1 to the north and east. The staff has reviewed the requested zoning change, finds it conformed with the general plan and zoning ordinances, and the planning commission reviewed this request on their December 18, 2019 meeting. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of Z-19-17 for the zone change request from the single-family residential 12,000 to 10,000, based on the following findings. If you see those two findings there, so.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
City manager, Carter, is, am I correct in assuming the west boundary is with the city of St. George? Is that in the right location?
That is correct. The St. George, sorry, I'll help out. That is the, St. George is to the west, and then Washington's southeast and north.
And so this property would be accessed off of the roadway from the St. George side?
The, my understanding is from 3090 South, between the church and the other parcel, there'll be a road.
And we do have, probably, Randy, or you representing this, we do have a representative of the developer here if we need to.
So there's a roadway that goes up like by the LDS chapel off 3090?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, this is a public hearing. Any of you out there that have an interest in this particular piece, you're welcome to come on up and please state your name and share your thoughts. Doesn't look like it, so I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second?
Coats. Sorry, I wanted to jump in there. Do we want to not close, to the councilman who made the motion, do we want to not close it, but to hold it open until the vote in two weeks and close at that time, as we discussed prior? We had some, had some discussion on that. I, I don't know that we came up with a policy, but...
Yeah, and we haven't, I don't think we've discussed that past. But I think we talked about that as being kind of a, a format, is that we, if we're going to keep taking input from the public moving forward, we need to keep that public hearing open until we vote on it.
This one is on the agenda tonight for action.
This is, is this not a...
Item 6B shows, shows a...
Consideration to approve.
A vote. There was a, a public hearing in the planning commission.
There was a public hearing in the planning commission.
And this was properly noticed.
So why wouldn't this one be on a two-week holdover then?
I, I'm not so sure we need to do a two-week holdover. In this case, there's no one speaking in the public hearing. I think it makes sense for, if the zoning's going to be approved, for us to move forward and to allow the developer to...
Yeah.
To move, move forward with his process.
The established policy for the, for the council on matters like this has been to have a two-week holdover on those, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not aware that we've changed that in any place. Yeah, so... We discussed it. Yeah. It has been to the discretion of the council on whether they do it. For instance, last month, we didn't do a two-week holdover on something because they ended that council's time, and we took action on it. But that was by a specific request. Well, by, by, yeah, by council. I don't know if this came by specific request for council either. Maybe Denise knows why this was put on the, the particular one. I assume that all you would do is, if you wanted to hold it over, you would just table the next item, but it, it is scheduled if you want to.
So we're not bound by any ordinance for a two-week holdover? It's our discretion tonight?
Like we have, no, it was just the practice of the council.
Would there be another motion instead of the current motion?
The current motion is to close the public hearing.
And then you can move on to the item B and decide, determine on the other way, on the other way?
Well, I think it depends. If we're, if we're going to hold it over, we need to keep the public hearing open, is what we determine.
You could make the motion to, to hold it over until the vote. That would solve that. Then you could, then you could deal with all of it in the next motion.
Would you do the honors, Councilman Ward?
I would be, I would be happy to. I'd like to make a motion that we hold over the public hearing for consideration to approve the zoning change request, Z-19-17, until such time as, as it is voted on.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second.
Staley, eye.
Clough, eye.
Ivey, eye.
Ward, eye.
Coats', eye.
All right, thank you. Item B then, consideration to approve an ordinance granting a zone change request, Z-19-17, a request of single-family, residential, single-family, 12,000-square-foot lots, R-112 to residential, single-family, 10,000-square-foot lots, R-110.
I'd like to add on to Councilman Ward's concerns about the concept of how we've been doing things as a council is to allow the two-week holdover. Though there hasn't been anything brought forward new in this public hearing, it allows us an opportunity to research more and understand more as a council, and to get more information from the people who couldn't come to these meetings. And so I see no reason, though it is not an ordinance, it has been a common practice which we've been doing during our tenure. I'd like us to talk as a council before we change things. I know we made an exception last time, based on a specific circumstance, but I was in an underknowing standing that we were changing things for items come forward past that point. So I would prefer us to continue that practice until we've had time to talk as a council to change things if we so desire to do so.
And that's, that's kind of what we, in our orientation meeting, we've kind of discussed that as well. I remember that discussion that we would look at this.
We did.
But I think it needs to come sooner than later, as far as the holdover. For cases like this, the fact that it's been publicly noticed, it's had the two weeks, no one came out for public comment, it's not a, there's no things that are coming up, and so I think we, as a council, need to make that decision on items like this where there's not out there. Stuff that has more, more contention with the public and, and concerns, more concerns that are coming up, this is pretty standard development. I would like to see those be tabled and give the two-week holdover, but cases like this, I see we should make the decision and move forward. That's, that's my opinion on these types, but have the option to do the two-week holdover on contentious items that have more things that we need to get more information from the public.
Well, I do really appreciate Councilman Clough's consideration, because we want to always make sure that we give the public every opportunity to receive input before we make a decision. I, I do agree that where, where this is kind of an isolated situation, and, you know, I would hate to hold, hold up development when the owner is ready to move forward, unless there is a legal reason or something other than something that we haven't already considered.
We might need to detangle the two issues, because we're, we've got a specific instance where we've actually put it here, and we could possibly, we could possibly ask the applicant or the representative to come forward and speak to it. But we also have that larger issue of, that Councilman Coats spoke to, of holding it over. And while I take your point, and I really appreciate that, I didn't want to do a but there, but my, my sense is that I worry a little bit about the difficulty of, when, when would the public know if it was going to be held over or not? You wouldn't know that until, until people didn't show up. There is some benefit to just having it as a standard policy.
I think one thing that's been, as you're saying, Councilman Ward, is I don't want anyone to feel like, well, you're a contentious item, you get the two-week process. I think people deserve a standard process. So it's, it's just one of those things that it's, a thing that we can give to the community and to the public is a process. Process kind of gets to temper what we think with time, and I think it's a fair process.
Well, and I appreciate that, Councilman Clough, and I recognize that the prior council had initiated a new practice of giving a two-week holdover. The fact is, there is a process. It's a process that's been done for years. There's proper noticing at the planning commission level, there's property, proper noticing at the council level. Every single council member that I've interacted with has expressed open, openness to any citizen input. I think that going forward, my preference would be that after the public hearing is done, that there is no holdover, that we vote on that. I, I have concerns that if a public hearing is extended and opened, and there are other concerns or issues that are brought forth, maybe, maybe in a private situation, but not in public, that that could put the city in a real legal bind. I appreciate the, the concern of bringing citizen input, but, but there is a process that's been in place for many years, much longer than a recent change in, in, in this program. So I would say, I would support us moving away from a two-week holdover, and I think, I, I appreciate Councilman Ward's motion to give us discretion now while we move through that, but in this particular case, I would prefer us to, to vote on this tonight rather than wait.
Could I make a suggestion on this, on the, not on the motion before us, but on the topic of, of holdover? Could we, could we just schedule this at a workshop meeting so we can talk through this and, and get some, just get a little bit of, a little more discussion? We, we started that in our other meeting, but Councilman Clough wasn't there, and maybe just, and maybe just address the, the agenda item here before us. Mayor, if I could, can I invite the, the representative to let us know if there would be a difficulty in holding this particular item over, or if, if they have a need for this to proceed by the way?
Can you come, please? Come on.
Come on up.
State your name into the mic, please.
You know, it's, it's my opinion, I'm, I'm kind of right there with Councilman Staley. It's, there is a process that, as a developer, we're familiar with, and that is submitting, you know, the, the list, the addresses. It has been noticed. We noticed for planning commission, it notices for this meeting. You know, if, how long do we give people? What's, what, when would you say, well, this is two weeks? What's to keep us from saying we're going to go four weeks?
It's, it's pretty well established at two weeks, and we've, we've done it for a number of years. I, I'm not, I haven't, I haven't heard any complaints that way. I guess my concern is that on this specific issue, we, we put you on the agenda, and, and we have certainly given you the impression that this was going to be voted on tonight. I just would be interested if, if that would be burdensome in this specific instance for your, for your development schedule.
You know, it's always burdensome, burdensome.
Government's always burdensome.
It's always a lengthy process. I mean, any, anytime that could be saved is greatly appreciated. I can honestly say I'm not going to die over the two weeks on this particular project. We've got some other issues we're working with, some adjoining property owners. I'm not going to die if you want to do the two weeks. If I was in here on any other project, I would probably be hurt a lot worse than I would be on this one.
Well, thank you for your candor, and I know, you know, being honest with the government is often a risky, is a risky proposition, but I do appreciate your candor.
Anything else?
Well, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I appreciate it. You know, in closing my thoughts on this, though it may or may not be a practice in the past or who started, it is not a practice that we've agreed as a council to change. And so if you would like to, I propose we move that concept later down the road and address the items as they are.
I'm prepared to make a motion on this if, if there's no other comments. I don't want to cut anybody off. But I, I would make a motion that we approve the consideration, the, approve the ordinance to grant the zone change request for Z-19-17 to a, a request from residential, single-family to a residential, or, excuse me, residential, single-family, R112 to residential, single-family, R110.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second?
Staley, eye.
Clough, eye.
Ivey, eye.
Ward, eye.
Coats', eye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I wanted to make a comment with my...
Absolutely.
With my motion, I, I did, I did it too fast, but I did, I did want to reward your, your honesty with just moving it a little faster. It didn't seem like there was much to hold over, so thank you.
But, but on that note, I, you know, we have talked about it, and I think we need to get it on the workshop.
I think let's get on the workshop.
And discuss it so that we can...
Mr. Sullivan's a good man, we know that.
Yeah. Tara, will you make...
And just, and just to be clear... Can I, do you want me to make that motion as well? Well, we can make clear the distinction between the public hearing as opposed to just contemplation and discussion of this. Public hearing is a specific kind of legislative from our, from state law that we hold, in which we take comments that are actually of record. Once we close that, then we shouldn't be getting new information about it before we make a vote. So under these circumstances, so all we'd have to do at this point, yes, exactly, Councilman Ward, if you would, just retroactive, we're closing, we're taking no new comments on it. We've made a decision to close that public hearing, just to go back to it, just for formality sake. Yeah, and I hope nobody will, will think of this as waffling on my, on my public record, but I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in consideration for approval of zone change request, Z-19-17.
Second?
Thank you, I have a motion and a second.
Coats', eye.
Ward, eye.
Ivey, eye.
Clough, eye.
Staley, eye.
Thank you. We'll move on to item C, public hearing for consideration to approve zone change request, Z-19-18, request from residential agricultural two-acre lots, RA2, to the light industrial I1, located approximately 1,000 East Washington Dam Road, applicant Judge Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as mentioned, this is for a zone change, approximately 1.78 acres at 1,000 East Washington Dam Road. The zone change request from residential agricultural two-acre minimum, RA2, to the proposed light industrial I1. The I1 request is for the purpose of developing a parcel and the future industrial development. The general plan use designation for this location is the industrial I. The industrial designation allows for zoning districts of light industrial, heavy industrial, and business park. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is I1 to the north, northwest, and south, I2 to the east, and RA1 half to the west. Staff has reviewed the requested zone changes and finds it to conform to the general plan and the zoning ordinances. The planning commission reviewed this request at their December 18, 2019 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of Z-19-18, the zone change request from residential agricultural two-acre minimum, RA2, to the proposed light industrial I1 zoning designation, based upon the following two findings, and you have those findings there. Is anybody, Judge Palmer, anyone representing that? Okay, so there, here, if you have any questions, or Councilman Coats can answer any questions with relation to the planning commission.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right, we will move into a public hearing from the public. Any of you that have a thought on this, maybe we could hear from Mr. Palmer's representative first, tell us a little bit about it, and then any of you that want to respond, if you're okay with that. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Lay. I'm with Bush and Gudgel. This is pretty straightforward. I don't know if there's, if you can pull anything up. I mean, we've got a little map here. You can see...
We've set a New Year's resolution to not pull Google Earth up once.
Oh, sorry. You're going to lose all that.
You see, Councilman Ward's not coming.
Not going to happen. Oh, you know what? You want to pull it up on there? It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. The, the parcel is split, the zoning is split within the parcel, and we're trying to make it all the same, basically. It's all, it's completely surrounded by the I1 zoning, and this just makes the center part I1's pretty straightforward. It's not a big, not a big change, and so, I mean...
I presume no, no issues with access to the property behind the zone change. Obviously wouldn't make any difference to the, to the property uses behind it.
I don't believe it would, no.
The access is on the southwest corner of the property, so, and it's a, it's a pretty big, big hill as well, that's sitting there, if you guys have driven by. So I think it would take an excavator to be able to do anything with that property.
Any other questions for me?
All right, thank you. Again, it's a public hearing, and if you...
Sorry, Mayor, one, one for the applicant.
Okay.
Sorry. Is there, is there a reason that you went for the I1's... Is there, is there a reason that you went for the I1 zoning as opposed to, like, a commercial PDU, or PUD?
You know, the app, or, sorry, the, our client just asked us to do this zone change. He said he wanted it to I1, which is, matches the surrounding zoning, and so I don't, I'm not sure the details of his plans, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Come on, anybody? All right, I entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mayor, before the voting there, I wanted to just jump in with a little bit of conversation. This is, this is, well, this covers two places for me. One, one, I have some concerns with, that I've mentioned in the previous council, about our, our industrial zoning. I realize that this has industrial zoning around it, but I'm, I'm a little bit concerned in this growth phase, and I think we can expect to see more applications for industrial. I'm a little bit concerned that we maybe have not muscled up our industrial zoning requirements in such a way that it adequately protects our citizens from some of the things that could actually come in. So I would really like to encourage the council members to look over what is included in some of our I zoning, because it's pretty robust, and a lot of that is actually contingent upon factors that make me a little nervous. This is not very far away from some housing product, people where their residences, I'm just, I get, before we do too much more on the way of industrial, I'd like to see us kind of, like I say, muscle up our, just make sure we're all very comfortable with what is in our industrial zoning. And again, so my next point is, I was not expecting this to come up for a vote as the next portion of the meeting, so this would be one where I would actually like to see a two-week holdover, because I personally would like to, again, review that and contemplate more industrial zoning within our, the boundaries of our city with the, because once we bring that in, they can bring in anything that complies with our zoning at that time.
With the, with the precedence of how the prior council has done it, were you holding over after closing the public hearing, or were you continuing the public hearing? Because I think we just closed it.
Well, we voted, we, we made a motion to do it. We haven't voted on that motion yet. There's just, there's two places for council to give comment on, on the discussion there. Do it before or do it after the motion is moved and seconded.
But we, but we can, we can move forward with closing the public hearing.
We can close the public hearing, or we can vote it down and hold it open to the next, if we, if we decide to table the, table it for a two-week holdover, which, which is largely my comp, I don't have strong opinion on whether we hold it open or not. Not being a member of the public, I'm going to get a chance to speak when we vote on this. I, but I am making a petition at this point for that, for this specific one to be held over for two weeks.
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question? For the purpose of additional public input would be the holdover, because any discussion with regards to zone change that is not currently on the books, his application currently functions under what is on the current books.
Right.
So we couldn't impose anything that would, yeah, we couldn't impose anything that would, we may want to consider in the industrial zone, but it's not there, because the application is under the current.
That's not at the time of the voting, that's at the time of the application. So, so they, they.
So they've applied under the current conditions that sit on the.
The, what differentiates that is, is the timing of the application, not the timing of when it was actually voted and approved.
Yeah, the application.
Application set.
Correct. So I just wanted to make sure, if it's to get additional information, and that will help the council make a decision on an up or down vote, that's one thing, but I didn't want there to be an understanding that we will add some things to the code that may impact that, this application, because this application is under the current code.
Well, I appreciate that clarification, I mean, that does change things, but it does, it all's in my mind also, kind of make me want to have the council hasten some, some review of, of that code. I don't foresee any problems here, but what, it's straight zoning, and once you've got it, you've got it.
I would like to second the concept of, council has been given a great tool of going with the PUD concepts, and I appreciate Councilman Ward for bringing up this opportunity to really look through. We are at a little bit of a disadvantage from not having staff tonight, also, on discussing some of our concepts, which Councilman Ward is bringing up. I think it's a valid concern. It may need to be even opened up still, with the opportunity of hopefully proposing up other alternatives in zoning for this particular candidate that may benefit the residents and the candidate, and this joint thing. It may be better to talk about the concepts of other zoning that may get them what they're hoping out of this, and also protect interests, as Councilman Ward has talked about, of the residents that live close by. So I just, I find it a unique scenario that we're in right now. I feel like we're hastening to do a lot of changing. One, I don't have a lot of the normal tools I need as a council member to talk about this thoroughly, and two, I feel like we're changing protocol without having council consent, so I feel like we need to kind of slow it down a little bit. Time is more of an ally than a hindrance to anything we do as a public servant.
So if I could just speak to, to the straight zoning issue, one of the options, at least, that we have in our code is the option for an applicant to apply for straight zoning, which simply means this, that the conditions are already set, and that they have adhered to those, those set conditions. Now, having said that, there is some legislative discretion at the zoning time period, meaning that the council can consider it a reasonably debatable standard at zoning time, and just simply say, I vote for it or not for it. But straight zoning is that, meaning that they've come in, said I've met the conditions, there will be no additional conditions placed on a straight zoning issue. Now, I know in times past, the council has been effective in kind of saying, well, could we look at the PUD with the applicant?
Correct.
We could even do that tonight if we wanted to. And the applicant could say, yes, we're interested in that, and then we go that direction. But the straight zoning component is that if they meet the conditions, they have the right to appear before the council. But again, the council, because it's a reasonably debatable, can still decide whether it's an up and down vote, but it's not one that there's a lot of ebb and flow necessary, and that's why the straight zoning. I hope that kind of made some sense.
It's been my experience as a council member that the PUD options have allowed us to work better with any developer, not contrary to a lot of the things we're working at. Likewise, letting us really consider the impact of how we feather in any zoning with an adjacent zoning. That's one of the reasons I feel it's kind of difficult for the applicant, noting that he's representing the applicant. If we were to ask and talk about the concepts of PUD industrial, I don't know if he'd be fully able to talk about his intents or desires for the person he's representing in this particular case.
I don't think it would be appropriate for him to do so. The applicant's come forth with a, with a zone change request, that's it. And as a property owner, he has the right to, to make that zone change request, and at his, on his timetable and on his terms, as long as it's consistent with the zoning ordinance, he can build what he likes to build. I don't think that every single commercial or industrial project that comes forward needs to come forward in the form of a PUD with property rights. Property owners have freedom to, to work within the bounds already set by ordinance, and I, I think if we want to discuss PUD versus straight zoning, things like that, we should do it in a workshop right now. We should probably come back to decide whether or not we're going to close this public hearing, and whether or not we're going to vote on this tonight.
I'd like to add just one thing to Councilman Staley's comments, and that is, is that JP Investments already has a unit that's, that's zoned I1 of three acres, and he's asking that this piece be made the same or made whole. And I, where I do think there might be some advantage to have these discussions, I don't know that, that this applicant, I think the applicant's well within his rights to ask for the zoning.
The difficulty of that is, and I, and Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, in light of what you're saying, though, but once it is zoned, it's industrial, and if you're, if, if what you have on the books, as far as your requirements there, are not sufficient to protect you, and I'm talking about things like sexually oriented businesses and chemical production, even though he may have an intention of what he wants to do with that zoning, he may sell it to somebody else who has vastly different, and all he has to do is read, read what the ordinance is and comply with that. So industrial, because it is, because it is so broad and has so, and is so close to our residents, I'm, I, I get, I get reluctant with that, and, and we have been in the past successful at talking to developers and talking to them about PUDs, which, which is, which has been kind of an interesting change in the council, and it has really kind of helped community members, council, and developers come up with some, some very interesting and very beneficial projects that, that I think really exceeded what they would have been with just straight zoning.
You know, I'd like to add, though you're right, Councilman Staley.
Although, I'm not, sorry, I'm not necessarily suggesting that here, but thank you, David.
You know, and Councilman Staley, though you're, and also Councilman Ivy, you are right in saying there are some compliance things, I'm not arguing that. And I know you've had some council experience, but we've also had things of practice within the council since you've stepped away, where it's been very advantageous to talk about the concepts of beauty. It is not in any way to hold this at hostage. I mean, actually, it has been a very pleasant and a good thing for both the developer, for the councilman, for the community, and it actually continues to be a good tool. So I encourage you to understand a bit more about it.
Well, that, that point is well taken, and we can have that discussion, but tonight is not the right time for that discussion. Tonight, the applicant's come forward with a zone change request.
Right.
And I think we need to stick to what the topic is tonight. If we want to discuss PUD, commercial PUD, industrial versus PUD, versus commercial industrial zoning, we can have that conversation another time, but.
I agree.
I'm, I'm prepared for a vote, Mayor, if you're, if you're.
I guess my final thoughts are simply saying that it's not been an improper practice to bring that forward, Councilman Staley. Completely, okay. It is not in any way a disrespectful thing to bring this conversation.
You ready to make a vote?
You looking at me? Yes. Ward, aye, for closing.
Closing the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Who made the vote?
It was, it was voted and then seconded, so we're ready for a roll call vote. You look at me, I vote.
Okay. Okay.
Coates, aye.
Staley, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ivy, aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed. We'll move on to item D, consideration to approve an ordinance granting a zone change, Z-19-18, request from residential agricultural, two-acre lots, RA2, to light industrial, I1.
So it would be, just to lay my cards out, I would like, unless there's further discussion, it would be my intention to make a motion to table this for two weeks.
Second?
Well, I'm not making a motion, I'm just, just.
My bad.
I, with, without other comment, Mayor, are you, are you ready for?
I'm ready for a motion, if there's additional comments or questions.
Just make sure I'm looking at the right line item here. Make a motion that we table the approval for a ordinance granting zone change, Z-19-18, as a request for residential, from residential agricultural, in the two-acre lots, to light industrial.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Coates, aye.
Ward, aye.
Ivy, nay.
Clough, aye.
Staley, nay.
All right, that's approved to be tabled, three to two. Can we move on to public hearing?
Sorry, Mayor, I believe I need to put a date on that. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, two weeks.
Did I say two weeks?
You did, but we should put a date on that.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
All right. Item E. Purpose of this public hearing is to provide the citizens with pertinent information about the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG is what it's called, program, is allowed for discussion of possible applications for the 2020 funding, funding cycle. The grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and moderate income persons. The five-county region in which Washington City is a member is anticipating to receive approximately $813,000 in this new program year. All eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDBG application policies and procedures manual, and interested persons can review it at any time. Several of the eligible CDBG activities include planning, administration, construction of public works and facilities, such as water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisition of real property, provision of public services, such as food banks or homeless shelters. In the past, Washington City has received CDBG funds for low-income or eligible projects. The most current one we have is the Aaron Kimball Foundation. The city has handed out its capital investment plan as part of the regional consolidated plan. This list shows which projects the city has identified as being needed in the community. Will anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions, please identify themselves by name before they speak? So if you have any questions or comments on that.
Can I just add to that just a little bit? So Community Development Block Grant is administered by HUD. It does require a, either an eligible activity or a low or moderate, moderate income standard being met, so it can't be just used for anything. We have in times past primarily been a sponsor, essentially, because it has to be an entity like a city that, that does this. And so, as you mentioned, the Aaron Kimball Foundation has been one, our most recent one, and that was a few years ago, and they approached the city and requested us to go through this process. The city will still be a pass-through, but they're responsible for all kind of the administration. So this is a two-part process, and it's very, very highly regulated from HUD. So the first part of this is this hearing this evening, which just simply opens it up for other people, other individuals, to stand up and say, can this be considered? And then that taken into the public record. Once the council decides that we would like to support any or all, then another public hearing will be held in which the public can comment on that, and then from there, the application will go in. All of it has to meet, any proposed project has to meet the consolidated plan schedule that we submit annually to Five County. I do know that, that the, we've, of the one applicant that we have approached us and asked us to go through this process, we have been able to add their project to our consolidated plan, not to indicate that it will be granted, but just that it be eligible.
Which one is that?
I think they'll speak. There they are. Oh, well, hold on a minute, I don't have that authority. Yeah, so what we'll be going into now, Councilman, is, is anybody who wants to propose, and I believe the one who requested us to go through this will be speaking, and so they can answer. It goes much better than I can.
Councilman Staley, do you have a comment?
I was just curious as to who the, what prompted this, so it sounds like that's about to be answered.
Okay. Next, public hearing, come on up.
Thank you, guys. Good to be back here again so quickly.
Please state your name.
So, yes, I am Lindsey Boyer, and this is Madonna Mountain. We are representing Dove Center, who legally acquired the Aaron Kimball Memorial Foundation two and a half years ago. We have taken over that beautiful facility just down the road. We've been able to serve several households in those transitional units, and we have identified a desperate need to increase the amount of units we are able to use to provide that transitional housing for the families that are coming through our emergency shelter. We have a high number of households that exit from shelter during the year that do not have permanent housing opportunities, or resources, or grants, affordable housing even available. There are just a lot of barriers for the families we're working with, and we would like to propose a project to our facility, renovating a pretty simple and affordable renovation, to the downstairs ground-level floor, to add two family-sized transitional units, and preserve one of the offices to provide onsite counseling and advocacy and case management. But this would help us support our goal to continually increase the number of transitional units, has been our commitment when we took over Aaron Kimball. And we, we see a pretty drastic success rate in the households that are able to access transitional housing, or some type of rapid rehousing assistance. or some type of rapid rehousing assistance. Um, substantially higher percentages of households who transitioned to permanent housing and self-sufficiency. And, uh, we would really like to be able to take advantage of this funding to support some fundraising efforts we've already began this last few months, uh, to do this project, especially because it is pretty affordable from what we understand. I don't know, I'm not in the business, but that's what I hear. Um, so we would really like to, uh, be considered for this, uh, funding for this project, which I want to add.
I think you covered it.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? So you're saying statistically, when families come out of, of what situation before, before they go into permanent housing, there's a, if you could just kind of explain that for me, is that, is that enough for you to go on and understand what I'm asking?
Well, let me give you this really quick and see if it covers it for you. So, uh, last year during the fiscal year, we had about 150 households exit our emergency shelter, which is only about a 30 to 90 day stay, um, because it's, it's a communal living environment. It's a safe house. Um, it's, it's not designed for longer-term stays nor transitional, uh, housing. And, uh, last year, over the 150 households that exited our shelter, uh, about 10% exited subsidized housing or transitional housing, which included our units. 6% exited to non-subsidized housing, 8% returned home to abusers, 10% relocated to another area, leaving as high as 65% in need of housing placement. Of the households that were able to access transitional housing and rapid rehousing assistance, of those homes, 70, of those households, 75% of them transitioned to permanent housing successfully.
75% of wish.
The household to access transitional housing.
Thank you.
And the households that are eligible for this are families who have experienced or, um, single adults who have experienced domestic violence, um, sexual violence and uh, have experienced homelessness because of that. Um, you know, this, we serve a lot of, uh, different people on different levels of need and those who are in the place of needing safe shelter, uh, transitional housing is a complete game changer for those individuals. Uh, turning your life around in 30 to 90 days is unrealistic. It's great that we have a landing place for, um, that initial crisis, uh, but to really be affecting change, we've, we've got to be able to work with people on a continuum of care over a period of time where they're able to access advocacy, counseling, support for a lengthier period of stay. And when they're in transitional housing, they're more connected to those services for longer.
Can I ask just a quick question? Uh, right now, I'm, I'm getting the idea of the 150 houses you, households you helped, 10 roughly were able to have transitional housing. What is your capacity of your transitional housing? Again, I'm trying to understand that clearer. What is it to date, right now, your transitional housing capacity?
Right now, we have three smaller sized units that can accommodate single adults or single adults with small children.
But not a family. So this is going to have a, like a larger capacity with these two units to address a broader, like a broader spectrum of these families coming to you?
Yes.
Okay. So it's almost going to double in a sense, if not more in its capacity because it's more for families than just a mother and a child or whatever. So hopefully this can give you more opportunity to expand that success rate in transitional housing.
Yes, yes. We, right now, we, because we are limited in the number of units we have, we try to, um, make the length of stay as compact as possible while still being supportive and effective. Um, so we've been able to serve more than just one household per unit per year because we really try to accelerate the, the progress and the, um, their action plan. And we try to get them jumpstarted pretty early from shelter. So by the time they get to that transitional stay, they're already well on their way.
Right.
But sometimes they need longer, all the different circumstances that arise. Um, so our hope is, is that yes, we can nearly double it with, with this addition. And then we just want to continue increasing the number of units we have over the next handful of years because it's so desperately needed.
I, I just like the public to say, I really appreciate the beauty of what you are doing for our community. It is such a wonderful thing to have that great safe place. You're looking at proven counseling in a safe place and, uh, raising a family in our day and age is a crazy time, and especially these high need households that are in more care than the average home. Um, I'm so grateful that you guys are part of our community and looking to expanding your resources to help us out more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you for me, um, define transitional housing? Uh, maybe just explain what that means to you?
Yeah. So traditionally, uh, transitional housing is a transitional stay that's intended to be temporary for up to two years, that gives someone the opportunity to, uh, get their feet under them, so to speak, and not have to be responsible for 100% of their cost of living until they get to that, um, progressive place at the end of two years to be able to go, um, out self, with self-sufficiency and cover all their living expenses. Uh, the goal is for that time period to be used wisely for whether it's going through some kind of a, a trade program or getting some schooling, um, obtaining gainful employment. Uh, you know, that, that transition time that's required for someone to go through those steps that are typically not feasible within just a couple of quick months turnaround.
And then can you tell me, um, what receiving this block grant would do for you specifically? I'm, because I'm not, this is the first time I've been dealt with a block grant unless somebody else's memory is better than mine.
So this grant is restricted to the renovation only. It doesn't cover like the furniture or landscaping or any of the other parts of our project that we want to fund with other sources. And this would really cover the bulk of that, um, structural, you know, renovation. And we have a really great community that supports us, but we want to help our, our community's dollars go further with government funding dollars. So it would do a lot for us.
Could you be specific with some of the dollars? What, how, do you know how much, what this represents to you dollar-wise? What?
So I hear, again, this is not my area of expertise, but we can do this renovation for approximately 70, 75,000. Our building is already structured, and this was mentioned earlier, the Aaron Kimball Memorial Foundation remodeled this building and added to it, gosh, how many years ago? Six, seven? How many years it's been? And the way it ended when they were finished with their renovation really set it up nicely to be able to create two units out of it with two existing bathrooms, an existing kitchen. Um, the, the children's playroom has a kitchen, sink spaced. We have our, um, very sophisticated architectural, uh, draft for you. And, and so we, we're told that it's a, a pretty fairly reasonable, um, slick project. And we would also like to, uh, make sure that, you know, they're fully furnished, people don't have furniture when they come in, and we have a need for reflooring the upstairs units. Um, they'll be easier to take care of longer and to sustain the quality of the units and, uh, to add, uh, artificial turf in the yard next to the play area so that it is a kind of a, more of a playground area for the children that are staying there.
And the upstairs units are currently being used in there?
They're currently, yep, independent units.
And they're smaller units for smaller.
Uh-huh.
And they're in a quicker stay, correct?
Um, it's generally, it's generally expected someone who is either a single adult or maybe only has one child is, um, going to have a, a little bit quicker turnaround because their expenses are not as great. But a mom with four kids has, you know, a, a much bigger health decline. Do you want to add to that?
It's typically, we're seeing, um, about six month stay in those apartments right now.
Okay.
And that gives them time, it, it, we're kind of pushing them to get into another apartment out in the community, get their job or get into school or whatever they need to do.
And I guess the reason why I asked the question is, in, in my mind, I was thinking the smaller units, they get in and just get established right after they have to get out of the situation they're in and then they can move to more longer stay until they can get established. I didn't know if you had a transition as far as that goes.
Typically, they go into our emergency shelter first. Um, when they're in trauma, then we have, um, surrounding services. We have staff 24 hours a day at that, um, emergency shelter. And then once they're established a little bit and, um, they're on their healing journey, then we can move them over to the other units.
And just, I'm just for the public to know, where is that location?
The Aaron Kimball, the Aaron's house?
Yeah. No, not the, not the one.
Uh, the emergency shelter is, um, we keep it confidential.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I didn't know. I didn't know. So that's great. So where should the public go? Do they just call that number?
That's, that's a great question. So we have, uh, three locations actually. In our business office or outreach advocacy center is located in Truem Park. And I can give you the mailing address to that, physical address to that, phone number, what, what do you guys need?
Well, I was just, if the public wanted to know, maybe the phone number.
Okay.
You can send, give that to our city recorder.
1204, okay.
And, and they can pass it on to us and we can pass it on.
Perfect, perfect. And has any of you ever written a CDPG grant? Cause I'll be calling you. I'm just kidding. I'm actually learning a lot. It's not that bad.
We can probably give you some help, but it'll be important if you do it correctly since we're the sponsor.
Yeah, it'll definitely make you look good, don't worry.
But, but I will, I will mention tonight for the benefit of the council, again, you are not making a decision this evening. You are just simply those people, individuals who might be requesting services. Good questions because ultimately you will say, we are interested in sponsoring this particular project. So your questions are good. Their information will be much more detailed at that time as well because a CDPG application requires that. And, uh, and then still subject to five counties allocation. But, uh, it's there what's called a pre-qualified, uh, program, which means they would not have to go through the same steps that we would go through if we just decided to do a project in the community in the low and moderate income area.
So Roger, could you just walk us through, and you've done that with the previous council, but I admit that I don't recall this as, as well as maybe should. But once that is in place, um, the city is basically the sponsoring entity and?
We're pass-through entity because they don't qualify under HUD rules to, uh, actually receive the funds. So this is very common. As a matter of fact, when the city becomes a certain level, and I'm not sure what that is, uh, like St. George, they, they get additional funds to do simply that, to just disperse them throughout. Um, we will get to that point. It's a population-based, uh, number. Uh, we're not there yet. So traditionally what we've used, and we have not used a lot of community development block grants in times past, and that has been for a specific reason, for, on city level. And it's because it's not an easy necessarily threshold. First of all, there's only specific projects that qualify. And second of all, you have to meet the threshold of low and moderate income. And we have a lot of our city that will not meet that. Um, and that's done through surveying, that's done through, it's a pretty extensive process. Uh, and if there's sometimes groundwork to be done, they can be environmental, you have to have environmental projects. And so they just don't become cost-effective for us to do. Uh, these pre-qualified programs like this one are great programs. They don't have to go through a lot of the legwork, but they still need a sponsoring agency. And in a community like ours, the only sponsoring agency they're going to find is to keep is the city. So what we will do is monitor the paperwork. We'll make sure the paperwork is done properly. We'll monitor the paperwork, make sure that the dispersments are proper, make sure that they're following the requirements that HUD has set out. Uh, depending on the amount of dollar amount they take, there may be a, what's called a, a, um, special audit. And those are just required for federal funds over a certain dollar level. Um, and, uh, the city would be involved in that process as well. So we will monitor them, um, offer them what help we can because we're part of this. Um, but at the end of the day, we, we try to keep this administratively less burdensome on our city staff too. So they do most of the work. We just do the checks and make sure that it's all kind. I, I hope that helped a little bit. We haven't done a lot and I don't believe any has happened during your time on the council. So those are good questions.
I think the last one we did was the Aaron Kimball.
It was.
And it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and it's been probably.
Eight years. Eight to 10 years.
Yeah, it's, it's been more than six years ago.
It's been a long time.
Well, we could talk with you all night long, but if you don't have any more questions, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you very much. Yeah, anybody else out there would like to make a comment or?
Uh, Loretta Jensen, eight oh two Cotton Mill Lane. Um, and from what I get, I'm just learning about this program, but I have concerns about the city taking on fed, uh, funds through the government. And I guess this has been, you've had these before?
Yes.
For certain projects?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wonder what ties are in with the federal government? Cause there's lots of strings attached and requirements and things like that. I guess there's a lot. You probably want to go into that tonight. And my concern is, yeah, the red flags that come with these programs. And are we doing it just to help certain groups? That's great that they have those needs. But what is the purpose of the city taking on these fed funds through this, uh, CDPG?
So Mayor, again, if I can answer that?
Sure.
So, um, that's part of the purpose of tonight's public hearing is anybody has the opportunity to stand up and say, we would like to be considered for that. Uh, the cities again, the, the HUD, the Housing Urban Development.
Yeah, I know about them.
They, uh, they require a sponsoring agency to be the pass-through agency. In this case, it, it's cities. And so we have been, uh, we're pretty familiar with the CDPG grant programs. We have administered them in times past. There is, uh, uh, some pretty extensive paperwork. Again, that's the responsibility of the recipient.
Right.
And, uh, we just simply become the pass-through of the federal funds to the recipients for either lower, uh, moderate income or special.
Okay. Yeah. My concern is just the rules and the regulations and the requirements. And then just reading through here, the acquisition of real property. I mean, the HUD, you can't, they, you have to obey what they say. And this acquisition of property to me means eminent domain. They can come in and acquire the property, whatever they want, for whatever purpose, for low income housing or things like that. So that was my, one of my concerns on this.
So, yeah, so, um, tho, those are the things the council based upon the request would consider.
Okay.
If the request was being asked of the council to condemn property.
Yeah.
Then the council will be aware of that. The council can decide if they want to sponsor that particular project or not. Um, and, uh, I don't believe there's a request in this particular category for condemnation action.
Yeah, right, right.
But again, tonight is just to have, whoever wants to stand up and say, yeah.
Well, that's just my concerns on this. I want to learn a little more, but I have concerns with any kind of federal money and I would like to see Washington City stay small Washington City and not develop any big low income housing or any of this type of stuff in our city because St. George's got enough of that. So we'll send a lot of low income stuff over there. That's what I see.
And I'm, I'm happy if you want to at any time. If you can give me a call, we can go through some of the questions.
Yeah, I will work with the council and kind of understand a little bit more, but I just want to explain my concerns and that for these types of programs. Thank you.
Did that, did that give you all the answers you needed, uh, Ms. Jensen? I just.
For now.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think in a lot of ways, I mean, I guess the way I look at it is that, is that this kind of, the, the red flags and the ties and the liability are on the city's port part are largely, um, carpal tunnel. If you, a lot of maybe paperwork and, and doing things and, but yeah, thank you for your comments.
And, but Mayor, but to be clear, nothing hearing compels us to do anything as a city. Certainly doesn't compel us to take the extraordinary, uh, effort of condemnation of land to support it. But to the extent that the city is a pass-through and is necessary to do it, and that it may involve now cities, uh, being involved to some extent, that's some of the decisions we make. That's why we have cities and communities. Cause those are the only entities that can, can even be eligible to assist in those things. So, and that's also why we have insurance. So, for some of those things.
And, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's to help these people who aren't used to doing these and we can help administer the funds to them. So it helps a process and the federal government to process these to help these smaller entities.
And one of the advantages, of course, of these types of programs is that they allow, um, these nonprofit entities to start to fill community needs where the government doesn't have to fill those needs. Now, yes, the government participates from a funding standpoint, but I think, I think everyone would agree here, probably everyone in this whole room, that we're grateful that there are nonprofit associations that deal with these crisis situations. It doesn't require them, there's not a compulsion on the part of the government now to create a different structure to, to deal with these. And if, if they fit, if they fit within the, the structure of the mission of the city, then that's where we would, would help them out. Um, and that's what this council will contemplate on.
Well, I appreciate that. And to know that the council will decide what you take and what you don't.
Correct.
That could be allowed with these federal. That could be allowed with these federal grants or that programs. You can say, no, take it back. We don't want it. All right, do that.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So may.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Staley, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Mayor, just with my vote, I'd just like to thank the representatives of the Erin Kimball Foundation. It's always wonderful to have you come visit us and echoing the comments that we do appreciate the work you do in our, in our community. We have some real needs and it's, it's, it's wonderful that you're there. Ward, aye.
Coats, aye, and second.
Thank you. Move on to our annual council business. Consideration to approve the 2020 meeting schedule for the council. Okay.
Mayor, may I comment before you?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, now that the public meeting is closed, a core component of the CDBG grant is the stated goal for said money. And just to be very clear for the citizens that may be watching this, their request, the request being made is for two units and one office space and to add to their facility. And also, the number that rang loud in my ears was the 8% of the people that are returning home to abused environments. So just to, just a comment, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to make that.
Thank you, Councilman Ivy. Ready to move and talk about the meeting schedule? Okay, Denise.
Good evening, Council. On our calendar, when I brought our calendar up, the only days that we seem to have conflict with our meeting schedule is the League of Cities and Towns, which is on your list, the canceled Thanksgiving and Christmas. That's the only things we have this year that are conflicts with our meetings. We don't have to worry about primary elections anymore because we're vote by mail. We don't have to worry about a lot of things that come up in the past. So.
I was going to say cotton days is one usually.
Well, cotton days, the last couple of times, even if it fell on our meetings, our meetings didn't seem to conflict with the cotton days. The only one I think that was possible was the Junior Rodeo. But the last couple of times, they've not had us totally canceled. Now, if there's a chance that there is something when the agenda comes out, we can always cancel the meetings.
So I have two documents in here on this topic.
Correct.
And one of them, one of them shows the, one of them shows the, the workshop meeting on the Tuesday and one shows it on the Wednesday. So we're presenting both.
You have the option, A or B.
So the, the other thing I noticed is they say 2019. So I figured the first one was the.
On the.
Oh, you should say 2020.
Exhibit B just needs to be corrected to show 2020.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's just.
To note that because I, I figured when I was looking at this, the 2019 was the current schedule, how it was laid out.
Yeah.
In the past, but that's how I kind of read it.
The, the truly impressive thing is, is as small as the text is on his device, because the way he has it set up, that he can even read that. So I, I'm, I'm way.
I mean, I don't know your exact age, but I'm hoping I'm a little younger. But the sad thing is I'm just as old, you know?
I did kind, I guess I did kind of step into it. I probably deserved it, but I'm also envious of it too, so.
You can laugh all you want, but I can't read anything that over there.
I do believe I'm a senior member age-wise in this group.
Also wanted to point out on, I don't remember A or B, whatever it was, where they had the public forum. In case there was concern that we wouldn't have a public forum because it didn't fall on the Tuesday before. If, if you decide to go to one meeting day, we would just have a spot on the agenda quarterly for public comment.
In the workshop?
No.
In the, in the regular?
In the regular. Either way, whatever you wanted. But there would be a spot on one of those agendas that would.
Because previously, that's been a separate meeting that we've opened and closed.
And we've had very, very little comment from anyone. And so.
I, I like having that. I think it's very important to have that.
I do too.
And so I like the, and it's, you said it's quarterly.
It's not like I was looking to do away with that. I'm just saying that's an option. We could just put it on.
Just put it in, on a quarterly basis, right in the council meeting.
Yes.
Possibly towards the front.
Yes.
Of the agenda. That's, yeah. Um, we, we did have some discussion on this at our, I guess we're calling it a training meeting. Yeah, orientation. I think we were a little bit divided. I think, after I've contemplated it, I, I've heard a lot of other council members desire to, to combine that. So I think most of my concerns are reduced. And I can see the convenience of it. My brain may explode at the latter end of some of these longer meetings when we put them together. But I'm willing to risk it if you are.
I think you risk it. I, I know your mayor doesn't impose himself on a lot of things, but I, I think you ought to give it a shot. I think that, um, I think it might, the end of the day, make us all more efficient.
The only thing I see different from what was discussed in that meeting is the works, the workshop session start time. If I recall, I thought we, we talked about starting at 4:30, and this document says a start time of 4 o'clock. It, it would be my preference to start at 4:30. I think that gives working individuals who are on the council and who would like to be at that work session, opportunity to give here.
You know, from my perspective, I've already arranged it to make sure 4 works, but I just want to leave it enough time too. But I'm good with 4:30 as well. I just want to leave it and, and to, I'm fine either way from my side. But that's what, from my point of view.
My point of view, Councilman Staley, I appreciate you considering the working class. That's, that's a huge thing to make things more accountable. I'm not meaning that as a slight at all, but to, to make it.
I think I'm part of that class, Councilman Clough. But thank you for the props.
No, you know, I just, I really appreciate that concept because having it accessible to the public is the main reason why we have meetings. So I do appreciate the 4:30. I can hear your point out, and I think it makes a lot of sense. So I could, I could be fine with the 4:30.
The retired class is good at 4 or 4:30.
I, I will mention from the staff standpoint, one of our, irrespective of what the decision is, we've had, our goal, of course, is to make sure that your packets are as complete as possible, as comprehensive as possible. That'll include executive summaries that in some cases may have been done otherwise in times past. So you can begin to process these things and have the most efficient meetings you can with respect to that. So we're committed to that end as well, irrespective of what your decision is.
Well, if I could add one thing, I, I know we've taken a couple of swings at things as a council before. I, I think one that I had a lot of reservations on was the mail-in voting and stuff, and saw such great things from taking a stab at that. This has been talked about on many different points of views, and I can see the pros and cons. But as a council, we reserve the right to give this a shot. And if it doesn't work, we, we can move this back if it better addresses the needs of our community to splitting these meetings apart, right? And that's not time-dependent. It's just based off of an observation time period. If it doesn't work, we can change it back. So knowing that that's fully within our control, this isn't like, you know, signing a mortgage or anything. It just lets us try something that. Well, fair enough. I, I, I'm, I'm fine giving it a shot. I have my reservations, but if it is something that does improve things and improves.
All right, any other comment on, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we, if there are no other comments, to approve the 2020 meeting schedule with the city council, or city council with the combined meeting.
About the start time?
4:30, if that's the consensus.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Oh, Coats, aye.
Ward, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Staley, aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, item B, consideration to approve the 2020 council members' assignments. I sent them over to you last night. If there's any questions on them, I will entertain them. If not, I'll just entertain a motion today.
I did have a question here. I needed some clarification on the, it's not pulling up very fast for me. It was in a different document form, but the economic development. I had forgotten that there was two, two committees. Help me understand.
One, one is working with Matt Lou, which is, I think, that one I asked you to, to be on.
Well, I guess that's what I'm not certain of, is what, yeah, what I am on.
And the other one works through the county, which I asked Councilman Staley, correct?
Mayor, would it be okay for you to run through those and, and just for the record and for our?
For your.
So we all know who's, who's assigned to what.
All right, let's do it. Okay, active transportation, Councilman Staley. Community center celebrations, Cluff and Nielsen. Community education channel, Nielsen. MPO, Nielsen. Economic development business advisory committee, Ward. Economic development council, WCEDC, Staley. Flood control, Cluff and Ward. Legislative, Ivy. Planning commission, Staley. Chamber of Commerce, Ward. Board of Appeals, Cluff. Hiring, Mayor. Investment, Coats and Ivy. Shade Tree, Ward. Youth council, Ivy. Solid waste, Coats.
Mayor, the only one there, Southwest mosquito abatement.
Cluff. I had Cluff on that. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so my, the, the Shade Tree Committee, maybe I'll have to kind of check on that, but that might become.
An issue.
A bit difficult for me to get.
Just let us know. Absolutely.
Change the schedule there. And then, of course, our last action is going to make it more difficult for me to get to the CCA meeting. Because they hold those, I, I literally came right from that meeting to this, which is your.
Oh, yeah.
Which is your, I will check with them and see what their, unfortunately, they, they're starting to get a much better attendance at those meetings. So maybe that timeframe is working, but I'll have to, we'll have to figure that out.
Okay. Any of those that you want to arm wrestle each other for a change? I'm okay with that also too. But I would like to ask for your support on these assignments.
On the flood control, do we get an alternate for that? I guess, I, I think we can. We can just send another voting member in.
I, I say, if you can't make it, there's two of you. If you can't make it, ask it. I would, I would suggest you.
It's not a very, there's not very often that we're a swing vote in that. It's, the committee is fairly, so I can, I can always see the agenda. And, but it, but there have, there has been at least one occasion where, where we wanted to make sure our two votes showed.
Sure, absolutely.
May I have the word on some of those meetings? If those come up, we should communicate.
Please.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd just like to add that if there is a, a meeting that is difficult, I will probably be available. So please just reach out. I'd be happy to.
Are you talking about because you're retired now?
Back to the four or 4:30, yes.
And I'd like to offer my services for information as well because I am a certified floodplain manager. So if you ever need any information out of me, go ahead and dive in, and I can help you out.
Thank you.
Help you out, you mean?
Yeah. Okay. Everybody clear? And I do thank you for your sign, for your desires to serve and taking on these assignments. I'm hoping that they'll take them and run with them and, and I will just move forward.
Mayor, can I just add that I've already emailed our new planning commissioner chair, a copy Drew Ellerman, to review the I-9 zoning light industrial? We'll bring that back and have a good discussion on the permitted uses as per council discussion this evening.
Thank you. Also, Tara, we need to put on the workshop to discuss those items, when to vote, timing to vote, as I understand you. Yeah, that'd be great. So I'll, I'll need a, a motion to approve the council members' assignments.
Mayor, I'd make that motion to approve the council assignments.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Staley, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Ward, aye.
Coats, aye.
Thank you. Consideration to elect a 2020 mayor pro temp, I'd like to ask Dan Cluff if he would take that assignment for this year. Any questions, comments, concerns? Not an entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we elect, uh, Councilman Clough. Sorry, getting used to this changing up. Councilman Clough as the mayor pro temp.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Staley, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Ward, aye.
Coats, aye.
Thank you. Consideration to approve a resolution appointing representative from the Washington City to Southwest mosquito abatement control district. That's already, we've asked Councilman Cluff to take down the assignment. It has to be an official resolution per the requirements from the mosquito abatement. So I, go ahead.
If I can say, I, I've been on it for the past two years, and I, I get a thrill out of it. So I'd be grateful to come back at it. People laugh at me because I think people have heard more about my mosquitoes than just about any other committee. But we just have an awesome thing in play for us with the mosquito abatement and grateful for the opportunity to serve again.
So take note, if you get bit by a mosquito, you know who to talk to.
I can tell you where to go to get tested if you need it.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion to approve a resolution appointing Councilman Daniel Cluff, the representative from Washington City to the mosquito, Southwest mosquito abatement and control district.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Coats, aye.
Ward, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Staley, aye.
All right, thank you. That's approved. Consideration to approve a resolution of the City Council of Washington, Utah, approving the designation of a representative to serve on the administrative control board of Washington County Special Service District Number One. Successor has been appointed. I've asked Councilman Coats if he'll think yes. That's a solid waste.
Oh, okay.
After all that, it's a solid waste.
I didn't say solid waste, so I didn't know that was. Yes.
Could I get a motion too?
Now, that's, just for clarification of my point, that's, uh, the solid waste is, is what they're getting rid of, not, not the value of the meeting, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
I guess the terms of the meeting. I haven't been there yet, so we'll find out.
A motion that we approve a resolution designating Councilman Craig Coats as, as our representative to serve on the administrative control board of the Washington County Special Service District Number One.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Staley, aye.
Cluff, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Ward, aye.
Coats, aye.
Thank you very much. So our next meeting will be Wednesday, the 22nd? Okay.
You guys will update our calendars.
Yes.
Thank you. That's really nice, by the way, with the calendars. It's been really helpful.
Anything to report from assigned committees other than there's no West Nile virus at this point?
Well, I'll, I'll weigh in on that community action committee. There's a, there's a number of things going on. So this is the Chamber of Commerce. They keep track of political events, things that are going on within the state from the state legislature as well as other things. So you've got the, you've got an open forum going on for the Lake Powell pipeline. They would love for you to, to go over. Of course, if you're here, you're not there. But there is a website that you can go to, to log in a comment on that. And, oh, is that on our agenda tonight? Because we're doing, shouldn't we? The letter from, for the Lake Powell, didn't we need to vote on that too?
We'll touch on that.
Okay, okay. Uh, so for that, as well as the tax, taxation changes that are coming through the legislature, that is, the chamber supports that, reduction of taxes. There, there will be some slight increases of burden on, on some of our, some of the chamber members and their businesses. But, but in all, it's a, the chamber has felt like that it is a broadening of the base of taxes and, and broadening of it and reducing it, that, that burden. So. Wonderful group of people and I think we're, we're well-served by, by their diligence.
Can I piggyback on that just because it's a reminder? And I wanted to get this on the schedule or at least make a modification as you see fit. Staying consistent with years past, our legislative trip will be on February 18th and 19th. That's always been the Tuesday and the Wednesday right after President's Day. That ties in. The reason we choose that date is because usually UAMs has a reception at the Capitol as well. For those who want to stay, we interact on public power issues. And so unless, unless anyone feels differently, we'll begin to make connections with not only our legislative people, but our lobbyists and others for those dates.
That's February, correct?
February, correct.
We'll leave it to 17th?
No, we'll leave the morning of, oh, no, no, we did, you're right, Mayor. We usually leave on the 17th, which, which is President's Day. We usually, traditionally have gone in the afternoon.
Right.
And then we've spent all day on the hill on the 18th and then whatever we needed to wrap up on the 19th, head home, be home by the beginning of the 19th.
So, I mean, on, on that item, Roger, if you can, me as being the one who hasn't been on council at all before, if you can give me a rundown of what I should expect on something like that, just in another time or maybe refresh some of the council, I just
Yeah, and we'll work with Councilman Ivy as well. I think that, did I get that assignment right? Okay. With respect to that, and yeah, and you guys as well. I mean, if there's issues that you're wanting our legislative body, the legislature will be in session by then. So at any time, if there are legislative issues that you want addressed, we have a pretty receptive group. Councilman Ivy, probably you could direct those to myself. We also have a lobbyist who works for us, so we can work on those issues.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to visit with you about that, Mr. Carter. And I, I actually started cracking that door open with our legislators today at the Lake Powell Pipeline Scoping Meeting, so looking forward to, to bringing back some good news for us.
All right. We, Mike Shaw, Councilwoman Staley and Councilwoman Ivy and myself attended that Lake Powell Pipeline meeting today and it was very informative. We had mayors and commissioners and residents stand up to, to offer our thoughts and, and feelings about the Lake Powell Pipeline. So it was a good meeting. They, they wanted to have good feedback and I think they did. I think that, you know, my philosophy on that is that we, we need to find all sources of water. That's one of them. And I know it's the big king of the mountain, but the, the district does a lot in conservation and reuse. Whenever the big experts in water sits right down there, his name's Mike Shaw. It's a great resource for anybody that would have any questions. So I, I thought it was a good meeting. I don't know how the other two council members felt, but there was some really good input running forth.
You know, it was really valuable, Mayor. We have a Washington City resident that works with the Washington County Water Conservancy, Conservancy District and her name is Carrie Rathge. And I know that last night there was some questions about the project and the scope and the timeline and, and the cost and things. She would be a great resource for any on this council or any in the public to reach out to and she is more than happy to, to give any information and answer any questions or concerns. So if any of you are listening out there, Carrie Rathge at the Washington County Water Conservancy District.
And I'd just like to add that the meeting was very good. And during the course of the meeting, they gave some time to our state congressmen and our senators and representatives, and then they asked representatives from each city. And Mayor Nelson stood and spoke and as he spoke, I just was so proud of him. And the time that he puts in in behalf of our city, I realize, begin to start to realize again how much time it takes. And standing by the mayor as people were leaving, the comments that they made and, and how complimentary they were as to his comments and the leadership that he shows our city, I just, I really was, was proud of that.
You're too kind. We'll move on to the city manager report, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, what I thought I might do tonight, and even if, and you can decide how much time you want to take with it, but what I thought I'd do is highlight some of the projects I would have highlighted and if any of the new council members have any deeper questions on it, we have some department heads that can help out with that as well. So, so let me just go through some of the highlighted projects really quick that's going on. We, and again, stop me if you want to have any further deep discussion on these, but we've been keeping the council updated on water tank construction that CoWest will be building to serve their area, that of course will be built by CoWest with impact fee credits being, being provided back to them. And so I believe that this, we're just working with them on the design of that right now. The irrigation master plan, Mike, I would probably ask that we try to put that on a schedule soon for the new council, too. Irrigation master plan is being worked on. The council has been receiving updates, but we'll try to get that on a very quick order for the new council so they can get updated on where that is, on that master plan. The East Lift Station, design is done and will be bid in January. The Washington Dam sewer line will also be bid in January. For stormwater, and I'll combine this one in just a second, but the, the Gypson Basin, the contractor was Progressive. That'll be about a six-month project on the, on rehab that, that facility. Stormwater master plan, we'll be starting a new stormwater master plan in sometime in the next month or so. So council will be involved in that as we move forward on a new stormwater master plan. Jumping over to streets, the Main Street project has begun. You've probably actually already seen them out potholing and that potholing will go on for, for a couple of weeks with regards to that. And that project is approximately six, six months? July 1st. And so that'll be, that'll be a pretty involved process, but we will keep, and I share this with the residents as well, there is a project page on washingtoncity.org. It's really well done and kept up to date on, on, on our projects. So please feel free to always frequent that page and see where we're at on those projects. So that's the Main Street project. Merrill Road. I've stopped talking to the public about giving promises on the Merrill Road. We're about 30 days behind on Merrill Road. They have paved, matter of fact, the mayor and I just drove down there a few minutes ago. They're finishing up the paving from 20 East to the East. And actually looks really good. Then on the east side, this is Washington Fields and Lost Ridge Drive, approximately the intersection there. That, they'll be working on that in the next week or so. They still got curb gutter and that to put over there before they begin the paving there. Like I said, they're about, they're about 30 days behind on that. I'm going to go over a couple of other things, but I've asked Mike, because a question was asked of me and it's a good question, I'm going to ask Mike in just a minute to get up and talk a little bit about pavement management a little bit and how, how the pavement issues are, are evaluated. But I'll get to that in just a minute. Merrill is part of that, so we'll be doing kind of an evaluation there when Merrill is kind of connected with Washington Fields Road. Mile post 11, the comment period will be ending soon. Washington Parkway, they'll be working on, putting in the box culverts on Washington Parkway 13. And also, again, weekly updates will be posted to the website on that one, is that project moving forward. The equipment was a little delayed in getting here and so we're looking at about February in getting the bid out and the construction on the signal at Telegraph and Washington Parkway. And we recognize that, you know, that's, that there's been a lot of pressure. You know, Berry Bill has parked there and created all sorts of but that, that relief is on its way. Probably the big project in power, of course, is Staley Substation. And just to update you on that, about 80% of the conduit has been installed. For those of you who haven't been on the council, it got delayed a little bit because we found groundwater. It's spring water underneath there and we had to overX, which is, is odd. Not, well, it's not odd. We, we find often in this city that our springs will move. And so we don't know how long it's been there, but we do know there's some corrosion and things that had occurred there. So it's been there for a while. The overX delayed us a couple of weeks because we had to do that. That's all done. The ground grid has been put in, about three steel structures have been put in, the flatwork is being completed.
Well, I have questions with that because I, I did notice, I mean, the mountain of overexcavation caught my attention because it's close to me. The water that we found, does that divert into our water systems? In the fact of, I know we have the opportunity of sending it down water just into our drainage systems, does that go back in? What do we do in that case?
I don't think we've ever kept, yeah, because we never captured it, just
Because my, my question in that is, are we doing anything to moderate the impact to water flows when things like that happen? Because they're tight to somewhere off of, and my concern is, is that we have the air springs up above that, two or three blocks, and water just likes to follow the path of least resistance. If we expose a part where that water may impact those different springs, are we, are we looking to measure how that could possibly impact secondary water flows and water sources and water rights that we already do have? Because we do have water rights somewhere. And if we pump this, pull this hole out, rarely is it water that is not attached to our existing water rights that we do have. That's just one of my concerns that we have.
Well, I don't want to get too far because I don't know how, I, I I can get in front of myself really, really fast. But on this spring, its primary problem we were having at Staley is just the film, that spring was inundating the field.
It's groundwater, not spring.
Yeah. But the groundwater can be associated with the springs.
They, they just like rewrapped the water around. So, and I don't know what they did exactly.
And that's what they did, Councilman. They, we attended the power board and Rick Hanson said that's exactly what they did in this particular case.
Well, I just, I just bring up the concept of, of just keep an eye on what we have. It is our water right, just a concern.
Yeah.
It's been engineered beautifully.
I think there's no concern, however, for us having Staley sub online when the load is needed. So we've been doing it because of the load. Both the Boilers and Green Springs Park will both be, they're mobilizing and beginning construction next week. And see. Okay, so Mike, you have a minute to just kind of talk about pavement management, how that all works?
Thank you, Roger. So for probably about the last 18 years, we've been running, I guess, probably about three or four different programs on pavement management, computer programs, where we go out and we assess the road and we give them a, a physical number based on the distress that's in the road. You know, whether it's cracking or alligatored or polished aggregate, you know, whatever it is, we give them this rating and we put it into the program. And then the program is actually set up to where it will kick us out based on the distress of the road. It'll kick out the type of treatment we need to do to the road. The majority of our roads, we do slurry sills. And we've got a very aggressive slurry sill program to where we try to hit every road in the city every five years with a slurry. Last year, there were some roads with a little bit more distress in it and that's, we actually went in and did chip sills on those. There's a couple of roads that we're looking at this year that we're looking at actually having to go in and mill out the road because the, the distress that's there is from the heavy truck traffic. We don't have this thick enough asphalt. So we're going to probably go in and have to mill that out and, and do kind of a reconstructive.
What roads are, are those?
Washington Dam Road and Washington Fields Road. Industrial had the same issue going on and we tried a, we went in with city crews and we did a skin patch over top of that ready, an alligatoring, and then we chipped it. That worked out really, really well for us. We might even try that in some of these roads here where we do that.
What, do you think the timeframe is on the Dam Road and Washington Fields Road?
It'll be this summer.
This summer, yeah.
Because we, we got to have the heat on any asphalt.
Yeah.
The warmer the temperature is, the better progress we get out of it. So, you know, one of our issues with Merrill Road and paving is the temperatures. We, we have to be a bare minimum of 50-degree ground temperature and 50 degrees and rising on air temperature before we allow paving to go down. So right now, we've been getting a paving window of about three to four hours in a day. So it's been very difficult on that project. But every five years, we go through this program and we go and do another physical reassessment of our roads. Asphalt, if you do absolutely nothing to asphalt, asphalt will last 20 years. So we, that's, that's our base that we start with is we have a 20-year life expectancy on that road. So our program is based off of RSL, remaining service life of the road. The state average on remaining surface life is about eight years. We're running about 15 years on our roads. We have a very excellent program, very aggressive program to keep that asphalt maintained because it is a huge asset to the city. Maintenance of the road is a lot more cost effective than replacement. So, you know, like I say, probably 15 years back, council was very aggressive on that, gave me the ability and, and we have the funding to go do that and I hope we keep that up. It's getting more and more difficult with, we keep adding more and more and more roads and our budget doesn't seem to climb because it's based off of our gasoline taxes and, and, you know, people traveling and our cars are getting more efficient and we're getting electric cars. But we're, we're trying to compensate now, but so anyway, that's, that's how we, kind of in a nutshell, how we do our maintenance. Bronson Bundy that works for me, Bronson is over the, the pavement management program, very good at what he does on that. He basically determines what, what type of treatment we need to do the road. And then, you know, then he, he puts the project together, brings it to me. We go out, we'll physically go out and look at roads, determine is that the right process? And that's how we move ahead with these road projects. So we have a whole mirror mid in our toolbox of what we can do, you know, from, from basically a sill coat, which is just sealing the top of the asphalt up to complete reconstructive roads and, and everything in between, you know, slurry sills, cape sills, you know, overlays. And we have all those in our toolbox. We, we use the right product for the right job.
I do appreciate just the technology that you've brought into this to make sure that we don't miss anything. I appreciate taking a tour out there and going, it is wonderful. I love the accountability having to this, built into it. I know you're going to be asking for funds as we grow because things may change in technology. As forbid, we get 500 miles a gallon of gas, right?
And, you know, the council, you know, I got to thank the council. Last year, you know, we came in with the paver, we got the new paver, it was in the budget and that was a wonderful addition to get that new paver. We can do some really nice work with that. But in turn, we were kind of lacking on the asphalt roller. And, you know, with the funding those out there, council allowed us to get that, that roller along with the paver. So we've got some really good equipment to do that work, you know, and I want to emphasize, we don't do new construction, we do maintenance. We don't go out and build the roads, but we maintain the roads and that's why we have that, that paver is to go out and maintain and not new construction.
I think it'd be fair to say the 0.1% that became part of the local option stuff that the county passed is really, really beneficial.
That's really, really going to benefit us this year. That's why we're looking at doing some reconstructs on roads. You know, we've needed them for a few years. We've tried to keep them going through and, and Band-Aid them and trying to get them to last as long as we can. But with that additional money, we can get in and start doing some of these reconstructs on roads. I will. I, I do have great staff underneath me that really make me look good. I, I'm just pretty much the eye candy anymore.
No, I really appreciate it.
Which just tells you what the rest of the department, that's like, okay?
I appreciate the concept of the Washington Dam Road. It's been coming up for so many years and addressing that, I'm, I'm excited to see that resolved.
Yeah, Washington Dam Road is, we're working on that project to reconstruct it from 1900 East to the Southern Parkway. We're working on a, kind of a cost sharing with the developer that's developing out there, Bob Brennan. It's, it's going to work out to be a great project for us with that cost sharing from that developer out there because he understands the value of having a nicer road built coming to his development. And that, that road really needs it. I just want to touch on one other thing. So with our Merrill Road project, we've had some issues with that project. We just would like to get it done. So there's some things that they, the city crews will be doing. One of them is the intersection of Lost Ridge Drive and the Fields Road. That'll be a project, the city crews will come in and we'll actually probably overlay that whole intersection there, get it to where it rides good. We've had some trench settling in there. I haven't been out there to check, but they should have got the permanent patch put in on the
Today, yes. I think so, we saw that as well.
They were supposed to do that Monday at the very latest, but this is what we've been running into with our contractor on the project. We get a promise and a week later, it might happen.
Mike, another quick question while we're in that area.
Mike, another quick question while we're in that area. At some point, we're going to need another light on Washington Fields Road. Are traffic counts or just the circumstances leaning more towards Merrill or further south at 3090 or 3650?
We just barely did another warrant study on 3090 South, and that was just right after the school that opened up because opening day of school, it's just a nightmare. We got to get through that first week and get those kids and, you know, the traffic to calm down, but it it does not meet warrants yet.
If we're close, I think from a safety standpoint, if if we're maybe the similar counts at Merrill or 3650, I I see those those traffic crossing guards and they're up early and they're putting out cones and they're just working so hard. And so if if there is a need and and all other things considerations being equal, it would be my preference to to keep safety in mind.
We just we just have to be very careful about traffic signals and and trying to meet the warrants. Because if it doesn't meet a warrant, it.
And that's why I prefaced this whole comment with traffic count question.
So but can I touch on that? Because Mike and I have had that. I actually feel the same way to provide some relief to that particular of those, that particular intersection in the school.
And and really schools with the with the St. George Academy across the street and then the the new Crimson Cliffs or Sunrise, excuse me.
St. George Academy.
The St. George Academy, and then further down is the new intermediate school. So there's a lot of, a lot of, Washington Fields Intermediate, so there's three schools on that road.
Yeah, so so Mike and I have talked about this. This is why we initiated the new warrant study, but I do agree that if we come, if we can get within a margin. Now, one of the interesting things that's going to be interesting, and I want to see that the the traffic impact study, because, and that is, we do anticipate, now again, you're probably three years to construct, and that is the LDS Temple on 3650. We've talked about the fact that you'll probably some increased traffic and demand for possibly the interchange. We talked about it even here, the interchange off 7. But I think it's going to be interesting to see what the projected traffic counts are going to be as well. Now, again, we would still probably need to do something on 3090 well before the construction is completed on 3650, but I think there is a is a pretty big anticipation that there will be a fairly sizable load that comes on to 3650. And so once we get those numbers, we'll want to kind of look at that and see even if 3650 hits something fast.
So on that note, Mike, when is the traffic study? Did we already send out to get that those traffic counts now?
Well, we do our own traffic county.
Okay. You're talking about for that facility?
No, I'm saying just for the light that's on, we were just talking about redoing it. I'm like, let's wait till Merrill Road is complete and then look how that affects, because I think that'll affect the intersection.
That's what we're seeing is that Merrill Road should reduce the amount of traffic at 3090.
And and I think the problem we see, and I mean, I was, my kids go to school at that school, and I mean, I was sitting there at 9:00 AM this morning going, holy cow. But I also admit, it's just a couple of minutes and then it clears out.
Yeah, that's our issue.
We don't want to impose a light when it's only affecting an hour or two. And one thought I had, and I, you know, I mean, I don't want to bring it up too much because I have to talk to the chief, is what if we had a patrol car helping with that traffic just during those periods of school? Because I know the intermediate school does that, but the elementary does not.
Yeah, we've and what we've done on that, we actually did during, I'll also do this, but during the early days of the opening of the school, we did have officers down there at that school as well. And so I think it's been great. We've sometimes stretched our resources because the high school also created some interesting dilemma for our officers this this year. But I think the officers have been great when they help if they can. But that is one of the reasons we've said, we've done the study, let's just hold for just a second while we look at those things that you're talking about.
And kind of what I'm asking is just if there's a patrol or in the area that he stop and help, because it's not the traffic on Washington Fields, it's the traffic trying to turn left on 3090, and you just get backed up because you got one guy just waiting and waiting and waiting. And so if we can have an officer stop just for 15 or 20 minutes, I don't know, if he's in the area to help out during those peak hour or two on beginning and ending school.
Those crossing guards are actually fantastic. Watching those crossing guards, the way they gather the children.
Oh, they are dedicated.
Bring them across.
Come rain or shine or whatever, they are out there in their yellow vests and cones.
One thing we do now is that whenever we do roadwork, reconstructing roads, we always put in the conduits for future signals. So our transportation master plan, we've gone through, we've identified, you know, we've tried to project our 20-year signal plan. And so 3090 South already has the conduits in the ground for a signal. 3650 South and Washington Fields Road has the conduits in the ground for the signal. Merrill Road, that construction of that, to put the conduits in the ground for the signal, not only at the Fields Road, but at 20 East on Merrill Road. So we're planning for, one of our biggest hurdles is the road cost us around $300,000.
For the light itself.
For just to get the light put in. So, you know, it's a pretty big budget hit to us in our street department.
Right.
Mr. Shaw, is the standards still three to eight?
It's three out of nine, I believe. I think it's nine warrants on a signal.
Yeah.
But you have to, I know you have to get three minimum, and that's accidents, that's pedestrians, that's there's, I don't know, all the different warrants interest.
So can I just add two more things about roads just before we leave them? The first one is with regards to maintenance and maintaining the roads, a number of years ago, the Government Accounting Standards Board required that cities either create a depreciable component to roads because they represent such a high capital asset of communities or to have a pavement management program with a maintenance of a road to a certain life. Most cities go with a pavement management system, what City did at that point. I think you measured our, I think you did mention our average life.
Yes.
Yeah, it's 15, has to be above 12. So that just tells you that 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 they've done a really, really nice job of maintaining that. Some of that we get benefited with because they're new subdivisions, they throw new roads in, they're brand new, et cetera, et cetera. But like Mike said, then we have to be the ones to catch up upon them after that. The second point I'd bring up that's somewhat related, but I think this is worth noting is, we've been working on this for a while, and I expressed my appreciation to Chief Williams. We do now have an officer that is trained in motor carrier safety, and they have actually been out working because one of the things that is a concern to us is that those roads that we put in don't get beat up and broken up and because of overweight, because of all the other things. And so we have now been for a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks have one of our officers dealing with the motor, the large fleet trucks going in and out of the city and dealing with them, and that's going to be positive, I think, because those beat up our streets pretty bad if they're not working. Okay.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I have, Mayor, is just, we'll talk about, I believe Council Starkey just handed this out. Oh, so we started on this today. I'll always point out that my draft was a half a page, his is one and a half pages. But I I think it's, I think it's fine, so.
Just just glancing at the at the letter, the one concern I have is it starts in in the first person, I, and then the last paragraph changes to we, and it's signed only by the the mayor. And I think the request was for the council support. I would certainly, from my standpoint as a member of this council, want to have this be in the we form and and have my support along with Mayor Nielsen's support on this on this Lake Powell Pipeline Project letter.
Well, I, yeah, I have no, I have no burden, no ownership in that, but I changed it personal letter to a be like, you know, a form letter, they're like, you know.
Yeah, let's do it.
I agree. Yeah, that's no problem. The the, I think we hit the points that were recommended in you guys' meetings today. The reason you want to, particularly in a NEPA process, the reason why you want to be careful that you don't make them look like form letters is because the federal agency that receives these letters, and if they're looking like they're just carbon copy, they count them as one. And so even though we're sending one, we don't want it to be lumped into everybody else, and so you don't want them identical. So, but I think we hit, because we got today the your paperwork back from that meeting with some recommendations. The good news, I think we had three quarters of them already covered in the original draft, and we just added a few others without making it look like a form. I don't have a concern with any signature blocks.
Well, I would just voice my concern. I appreciate you addressing my concerns. I really feel like it is, it's respectful for what we need to provide for. I appreciate just obviously recognizing the need for addressing water issues in our community. I have nothing as an issue with the wording, other than I was trying to understand, and I think we've started to address this, is this trying to address the mayor's opinion with the council? That's just where I felt it's more than just the we and the I.
We're going to change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I. Right, which is the start of that? We're, I think we're on the same page here.
Yeah, I feel like.
This is a great start, Councilman.
Look at us, man.
We're on the same page here.
Hey, I'll take it. No, I appreciate how you're going with this, Councilman, so I'll see to you. I feel like you're going the same thought I have, so.
So I think the only reason we looked at the I and we talked about last night, I don't think it's crucial, but I think the only reason we thought that is since the council was not taking any action as a body.
Okay.
But if signature blocks are all there on all of the council members, I think we're fine with that. But I I think when we talked last night, we were just knowing that there wouldn't be action on it.
Right.
We just have the mayor sign up, but I think with the signature blocks, that's fine.
Well, I have a few things to ask you, but we get like trans, we get a lot of the mayor signature representing everybody's common thing. I already changed it, now read, just so you know. As a Washington City Council, we would like to take the opportunity to provide a comment during this public scoping period regarding the Lake Powell Pipeline Project.
Beautiful. That didn't take long.
We thought it was very good, so if everybody could put the full name, I like that, how you sign stuff, somebody, Mayor, Lieutenant, Nielsen, if you could write that down, stick it down, I'll throw it on the letter.
Okay.
And also, council, be available to sign it because we got to get it out, so.
Yeah, so Friday at 5:00 is the close, so if we could actually just have everyone kind of swing by, well, if we can get it printed out here, you can do it on your way out.
Pass it down.
And just remember, my last name does not have an E in it. People mistaken that all the time, and it's fine, I just.
Your middle name's Ellen. You have a letter?
Faron, F-A-R.
It is Faron. It must be the curse of 1976.
You may need, you may need to keep going instead of having Council Starkey talk about everybody's middle name.
All right, are you done?
I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
So.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion during this meeting.
Mayor, before that.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, no.
I just wanted to ask that the current council get updated on any litigation or stuff that's out there that we're not privy to in the past. I'd just like a rundown with that and a future date sooner than later on that.
We typically do that in the closed session.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking that it happens.
So, so, so that, that's, that's really a good point. So we'll, we'll get that on the next agenda. The good news is it won't take very long.
That's great.
Good point.
I just wanted to mention the.
The open house, how the new high school. It was, it was just a neat experience to go in and visit with the principal and then
see, see our chief, chief of police there with with several of his officers and representing us well. I really appreciate that. What a beautiful facility, and I'm just excited about to being able to stroll down there in my walker in the next 30 years and be able to watch games. And anyway, appreciate, chief, appreciate you being there, and and your officers are just downright impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? All right, now I'll entertain a motion during.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we got a second here, right?
I did a second. Okay, thank you.
Are you going to be done with that, Council?